Gracious heavenly Father, Father, if we come together tonight, help us to do the business of the city and do it as efficient and proficient as we can, Father. And Father, just give us guidance, give us knowledge, and just be with everyone that's here this evening, Father, and let us just have good productive meetings. Can you translate with me?
Amen.
Okay, we've had one resign from the council, and we've had one volunteer. So, Shannon, if you would, come on up.
Don't we need to vote on this or something? Aren't we supposed to vote on this? Aren't we supposed to vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, we're having to come up and take a seat, I just want to quit.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to stay right there.
No, I don't even know yet, I'm staying, I mean, but I want to make sure we follow procedure correctly. This is supposed to be a voting position.
Okay.
I'm not counting, we just need to follow procedure correctly.
Okay.
The council counts.
So, who made you, who made you an appointed? We, I mean, you just told her to come up and take a seat.
That's right. That's right. And I'm counting on, come on in.
I'm just trying to understand, that from my understanding, by law, we're supposed to vote on this.
That's true.
Before they say it, then just take the position.
Shannon, if you would.
Yes, I'll be happy to.
I mean, we haven't even talked about it or anything, you just pretty much put her in the position. I don't have to know the woman, so I'm not saying that I'm not going to vote, no, I just, let's follow procedure correctly, please. Sir?
Sometime one foot gets out of the...
So, you agree that we was out of procedure in that?
Do I?
You agree that we was out of procedure the way we was doing it? Or not?
Well, technically, yeah.
Okay. Technically, by law, we was doing wrong.
Yeah.
I don't want to be the one doing wrong.
No, we don't want that. We have got a vacancy on the council, and the council can appoint a replacement. So, we will hear some more.
Okay, have been any others? Mr. Chuck Albow has come to me about it, he's interested in being on the council.
Where did he at?
Well, I'm sure he didn't think he would be put in the position tonight, because they can't vote tonight if they're just appointed tonight. I'm sure he didn't think he would be placed in the position tonight.
Okay, so where did you put that on? Okay, well, with this number of attendants, I'm sure there's something that someone got on their mind, so we'll get that out of the way first. You? In the blue shirt?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Come on up.
Come on up.
I'm here representing the Black Snail Cemetery Committee, and it is my understanding that we want to accept y'all's proposals to maintain the maintenance part of that cemetery, and we voted to give y'all permission to take that fence up if you want it. Uh, I have any questions? I can answer them, if I can't answer them, find somebody to come.
Okay, I have no problem with the fence, so...
What do you want to say?
That's what I do. And, uh, but your board name, the board name table. The board maintaining that we've already started maintaining, uh, all of it. As we have been calling it one side and one side, which, like, we know that's not, that's just a definition of this man. So, but anyway, though, yeah, we will, we will take care of that, no problem whatsoever. So, appreciate you coming, that's all, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Davis said he wants, he said he wants to talk to the council?
Uh, we were, uh, it's with the annexation.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we have eight signatures here that are against it, and we present this to y'all, and...
You can't, yeah, we put it on file. Uh, that wasn't something the city was pushing, uh, with the agreement, knowing the failures of the people.
Yeah, that, out of the fifteen properties there, there's eight of them.
And that's what, uh, that's what our, is our end, is to satisfy the wishes of people. So, uh, for the annexation, if it's earned, it's done, they, they know that.
You know, I'm on the, I'm on the agenda, I've sent you an email, I'm on the agenda for the annexation update.
Okay. The council stapled at this point your hand in a good moment. At the last regular scheduled city council meeting, I made a motion, amended, stopped it, it's over. The motion was seconded, overturned, and approved. So, I see no need to sit through a meeting about the annexation that has already been killed. Unless a sitting councilman makes a recommendation to revive it and bring it back up, it is a dead issue.
May I address that?
Can I, can I make, can I, I would like to make a recommendation, if we listen to what she has to say tonight, if we want to stay in compliance with Arkansas State laws, we need to listen to what she has to say tonight, and how I'm saying.
Well, may I ask a question? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah?
Reason I was asked, I have a question, I was reading that municipal boundary checklist that was presented to us, Act 655 of 207 ACC, fourteen dash forty, one oh three. And it says something about the initiating party, which, who can technically bring the petition to the city council, and this is what I was given. And it says first, all landowners, which means there's fifteen people, all fifteen. The next one said the majority landowners, which, uh, fifteen, eight would be the majority. This is municipal governor, which would be the set amendment, then this it says state, and other, which is basically, you know, she herself was petitioning for herself. So, according to this, unless you're the majority landlord, you can't bring a petition to the council.
That's not true, sir.
That's what it says.
Um, Arkansas State Constitution overrides all of that.
What does it say?
I'll let you read it. So, the Arkansas State Constitution, Article Five, Legislation Department, One, Initiatives and Reparables, state that the people retain the rights for what governs them. So, I too have petitions, I have fifty-four petitions signed by people living inside the city limits of Emmet that would like to see this on the ballot. According to this ruling, you only have to have fifteen percent of the mayoral election voters. In the last mayoral election, Mr. Booker received seventy-nine votes, Shannon Peck received forty-eight votes, which is a total of... Yes, sir.
Okay, so, can you show me in the initiative, here, I know you, you bringing all this stuff to, that overrides the initiating party. It says it's the initiating party?
So, because this comes from the city, see, when I came to you, were you able to watch those videos that I gave you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, when I came to you, I approached you in the manner of asking the council to look at proposing the annexation, and you guys voted on that.
Sure.
It, it, so you, you initiated, once you, once you made that initial vote to move forward with it, that then put the responsibility on the city, so the city...
But then Mr. Todd responded there.
Yes, however...
So, we're back at point zero.
No, however, the Arkansas Legislature overrides that, and you'll look at it, so if you look on page... Where it says, page two, where it says local for municipalities and counties. Local for mun, it's the, uh, I would, I think that would be the third bullet going. Right in that thing, it talks about fifteen percent of the legal voters of municipality can override that measure. And so, the fifty-four people that have signed, they've asked that this be placed on the ballot.
No, no.
So, unfortunately, according to Arkansas State law, that's what happens.
No.
Yes, sir, it does.
You don't piss me off.
Yes, sir, it does.
That's bullshit. You're not going to annex us in, not us, we don't burden the county, right?
Currently, you are.
Why is the city, why is the city voting for it?
Because...
City has nothing to do with our county.
Because you are currently receiving city services and we... Yes, sir, you are.
No, man, I am, no.
There is water along that...
No, I don't have y'all's water, I got my own water, I got my own sewer, I all got my, I own trash.
I understand, and...
So, why, why we gonna have to worry about that? I don't know, Daddy, I don't care who the heck you are, if you're gonna be acting the way you are right now, and you're gonna be voting as mayor, I wouldn't vote for you.
I've not said anything about being voted in as mayor, I'm right now talking about the annexation.
I don't want to hear it.
And, but you're right, you have the right to, you would like to vote for it.
No, you're not gonna put us in the city, that's more taxes for us.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, go.
That's the whole...
While we're getting burnt, the taxes already from the government.
That's the whole point of it, the city people are paying five meals. Us in the county, we're getting the same exact services, but we're not paying that five meals. The five meals goes toward the city...
Your monthly bill.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, just like you are, but you pay a five meal city tax that we don't pay.
But let's, let's throw it all out there, because when you go to saying, well, you're not paying your five meals, and you're getting the services, it's almost sound like, you're getting them all for free.
No, 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 I never said that they were getting them for free.
But you don't throw in there that you're paying them monthly bill, either.
That's a given, that's a given, that they're paying their monthly bill or it would shut off.
Master's question, but no local legislation shall be enacted contrary to the constituting general laws of the state, and general law shall have the effect of repealing any, repealing any local legislation which is in conflict there ring.
Yes, sir.
But give the city the right, give the city the right to...
Yes, sir, but these citizens have the right to ask for it, to be placed on their ballot.
Do you have a majority of citizens?
I do, I have over fifteen percent, you'll read there, it says fifteen percent.
But, but, that's for the city of Emmet, not for the annexation of the county.
No, sir, that's not true, you're not reading your law strictly.
So, is this not true, this checklist thing?
That came from the state, I, I...
That's from the state, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's...
So, the state say this, and this what it says, the state, so the state says...
Mr. Borris, this is fifty-four people who live inside the city limits, who have asked for this measure to be placed on the ballot, fifty-four.
Okay, how many, how many of them are, what percentage of that is the voters?
It doesn't matter what percentage.
Yes, it does, yeah.
According to this law, it says, it doesn't say majority, sir, it says fifteen percent of the legal voters of any municipality of the county may order the referendum.
Of what?
Placing this on the ballot.
Okay, but what we hear is the initiating party.
On page two, under local for municipalities.
Where does it override this?
You made the initiation.
And he, and he canceled it, no, you brought it up.
At the very first meeting, the city, once I presented it, the city made the motion to move forward with it, that then took, the city was taking charge, and the city was moving forward with it.
Is the city still, is the city still moving forward?
The city of fifty-four people are, who live inside the city limits of Emmet, who are registered voters.
Is that considered a majority minority?
It doesn't matter what, it's, according to the law, it says fifteen percent of the legal voters who voted in the mayoral election.
Well, I vote to be tabled, I'll talk to the attorney and see. And may I have a time to go represent?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
When, when we were making a motion to table?
Till I check into this.
When were you making a motion to table?
To find out, is what she said, is this overriding this? Yeah, she said it overrides, I'm, I'm gonna check the attorney's seat.
I understand what you're saying, but what are we tabling? Somebody, I mean, what are we...
She was saying that her basis, her basis for filing is based upon this, she said reason it does override this.
So, you need to get, okay, so you want to get more information, you want to hold this...
I'm talking to the attorney's seat, it does override that, yeah, I understand.
I just trying to make sure I understand what we're doing.
I think that's fair, Reese, but I'm...
Yeah, because I, like you said, I want us to be right legally, not just run it personally.
I agree.
Who made the motion?
Grandpa.
Grandpa made the motion, you seconded, Mr. Morters?
All right, are any of those people that are on your list are here? Are any of them here, like our, the people from our, our area?
Yes, sir, there are some that are here, yes.
Why eight of them?
Um, well, some people say they don't think it's fair that they pay the five meals and we don't. Uh, other people say they'd like to see our town grow and take in a bigger population so that we can get more turnback money. Turnback money is based off of your population size, um, we would like to be able to do more things for our community to make it better, and so that all comes from having to have money. Uh, we would also like to be able to apply for more grants, uh, some of the grants are tied to a low to moderate income, and so we're, we're needing to increase that number.
Well, I think I need to go ahead and get a lawyer, I don't think that it's gonna happen, but you go ahead and try, but I don't think it's gonna happen. Don't worry about that.
It's okay, thank you for your opinion.
People that live in the city, they don't, they don't know what's going on out there. We like our country life.
I, I like our country life.
We have to be out in the country.
Yes, sir.
During the camp, we're in the camp.
We just feel like we should pay our parts.
Pay our county taxes.
But if that doesn't help your city...
We pay our taxes just like anybody else.
But it doesn't help your city, so you're not paying city...
I don't care about the city, I don't live in the city.
I know, I know you don't, and unfortunately, I hate that, that you don't.
Well, I don't live in the city, I'm not worried about it, I'm in a county. And the people that live out there, live in the county, they want to stay the same way, you're the only one, as I know, maybe, maybe one other, but that's it.
I understand, and change is hard.
County.
Yes, sir, I understand, change is very hard.
If you wanna be, if you wanna run for office or whatever, that's fine, move to the city. I have no arguments with that, and people that live in the city probably wouldn't argue with that either.
And I appreciate your opinion, and I agree, each person has their own, but at this point, you also have fifty-four people who live here who feel like that we should pay our fair share of the taxes.
I don't think that's what we were saying.
We wanted it on there.
On the ballot.
Yeah, on the ballot.
Then it could be okay to that ballot, but that doesn't mean that we would vote for the annexation.
Correct, absolutely, I have no idea how the people will vote, I mean, some may vote for it, some may vote against it. This just places it on the ballot so that registered voters have the opportunity to vote in March of twenty twenty-six.
I'll be checking in on it. You guys should be back.
Thank you for your time.
So, fifty-four on that?
I have fifty-four signatures, yes, sir. Of registered voters.
How many registered voters will be there?
It's probably four hundred registered voters.
There's four hundred registered voters, but only a hundred and...
Twenty-eight.
Hundred twenty-eight voted in the last mayoral election, which... Listen to me, let me finish, please, would you let me finish?
Go right ahead.
According to the law, the only ones that can sign this petition to do this are the ones who voted in the mayoral position, mayoral vote last time. So, if they didn't vote for the mayor last time, it doesn't matter if they're a registered voter or not, only the hundred twenty-eight people who voted for the mayor.
That's not true, Mistress Clark, hang on, let me, because no one knows who voted for whom, so...
Okay, you're right, you're right, I said it wrong, I said it wrong.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, though, I didn't want Mr. Clark to have bad information.
You're right, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, not those people, that amount.
That amount of people, yes.
That number of people, that percentage number.
Correct.
I'm sorry, not the people themselves.
Yeah, because there would be no way to know.
Hundred twenty-eight votes cast in the mayoral election, and that's the number that go off of percentage-wise to get to fifteen percent, to put it on, place it on the ballot.
Which I think is like forty-seven, forty-eight percent or something like that. Well, again, I just want to know if it applies to the annexation, that's what I'm saying, because it doesn't really say that, it doesn't say that. Brother, you gotta do the check. But when I read it, like I said, it said the legislature had to try to override it, that's why I said, to be, because Representative Clark is right. I agree. We need to start doing things.
Correct, right, right.
The right way, and we need to have all the information in front of us before we start making decisions, and we need to get past buildings.
That's correct, that's absolutely correct.
Please, please.
Nothing personal.
That'll make a big difference.
Just check any lawyers you want to pay, that's gonna clear it up.
And the only way we're gonna do that is educate ourselves.
I agree.
There was ten properties on that, no, the, zone three, the one we're going with, suppose the...
Well, I don't know what's...
Ten property owners?
Um, though, I believe, I didn't bring that with me tonight, but I believe there's a total of fifteen properties, um...
So, ten owners.
How will we... Maybe ten, that we could, I think, get ahold of.
I think there were ten names on there, so there's ten, ten property owners.
That we can get ahold of.
And, well, that's all that was on that paper.
No, there's more, there's, there's fifteen total properties along that stretch on both sides of the road. Now, some of them are corporations, some of them are people who live out of state that I couldn't contact, uh, there was one home, um, that was not, like you said, was not a functioning resident. Now, I think there's two homes in that area that are not functioning residents, so, but there's actually, if you looked at the data scout, there's fifteen separate individual properties out there that are not inside the city limits that we're looking at proposing.
And that's, that's, that's fine, I just, if the law says that's...
And then we need to talk to attorney, I mean, so the attorneys and the law, this is what the law says, this is what we gotta do, but we need to talk to an attorney. We gotta educate ourselves, make sure that we're doing the right thing, doing the legal thing.
Where we at?
I don't know, we didn't get the agenda, we're moving on, I hear.
Yeah.
Well, moving on to the next item.
Do we have an agenda? Huh, do we have an agenda?
We have it automated, came in after it was sent out, and that's five mill tax orders. And, um, what it is, is five mill taxes, ordinance, and do they agree with that?
An ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to levy a tax for five bills upon the assessed value of the real and personal property in the city of Emmet, Arkansas for the year twenty twenty-six and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Emmet, Arkansas, County of Henson. Section one, that a tax of five bills shall be, and the same is hereby, hereby levied upon all taxable property, both real and personal, within the city of Emmet, Arkansas for the year of twenty twenty-six, to be collected in twenty twenty-seven. Section two, all monies collected and graded by said tax shall constitute a general fund to be created to general and ordinary expenses of the city of Emmet, Arkansas. Section three, the clerk of the city of Emmet, Arkansas shall certify this levy to the clerk of Henson County, Arkansas, to be placed upon the books and collected at the same time and in the same manner as state and county taxes are collected. Section four, all ordinances or part ordinances in conflict here with, are hereby repealed, and if this, this ordinance being necessary for the public health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Emmet, Arkansas. An emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication.
Didn't we already do that?
We have it every year.
Now, we've done it this year already once. Have we not?
He didn't cover it again.
I don't have my folder with me, I was hoping, I thought we'd already done that for this year. Oh, that's for next year, I would, we see you in twenty seventeen. So, what do we need to do, Mr. Mayor, we just, we need to read it three times and that's the done deal, or do we need to make a motion and etc., or what do we need to do here?
It says pass and approve this day, I guess, pass and approve today. It says pass and approve, I'm sorry, I didn't read all of it, pass and approve this blank day, a blank assignment, Mayor, and then I'll have to go back. So, it can be passed.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, increase the real tax. For the year twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, this is something that I've heard.
Same thing.
And that's just for Henson State County, right?
Well, it would, I could, my mail.
I said one blank, I just gave it to him, by Henson County, I think.
He's curious on for both counties?
Yeah, they, they've signed for both counties, you just go, the right county is still getting to tell it.
And that's for Big Lake in twenty seven?
Right.
Was that Big Lake in twenty seven?
Big Lake in twenty seven.
Uh, I want to, uh, if it's finished this year?
More questions? We don't want to be bad, this is for twenty six, we're talking service.
She says here, dear mayor, I am sending you a blank notice that your town needs to vote on and pass, and then send me a sign at C. Coffee back by November the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Your current village is five bills, and this is signed by Karen Smith, the Henson County clerk.
Right, that was far, it's for twenty six, for next year, to be collected in twenty seven. The way the county's just running behind, you, like you said, you'll get the same thing from them, but they haven't sent it out yet.
Well, I haven't seen it, I didn't play any more than a couple.
Second.
I have a question on something we tabled earlier when we first got here. All right. So what is the proper procedure for as people wanting to be on the councilship? Can we submit something on what I don't exactly sure?
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand that either. What's your, your
I don't even know. I'd like to talk to her for a little bit, and I have somebody that's come to me and approached me about being on the council. The way this is, from my understanding, the way it's supposed to be set up is the appointment is made and then they're voted on. But I mean, I'm not, I can't, I don't even know this woman. I can't vote yes or no, because I don't even know her. But I know the guy, I know the guy that approached me, and everybody in this room does. So, I mean, I just, before we jump Before, before we jump into something, I want to talk to her. When we leave out of here, that's my plan, to talk to her.
Well, that's good.
Well, I don't want to talk to her in front of everybody. I want to talk to her one-on-one.
Sandra, want you to introduce yourself, tell me where you work, what you do, also do that.
My name is Sandra Browning. I'm the councillor at the latest school district. I, I've lived in Emmett for seventy-five years. And that's, do you have any questions I can ask?
I'd love that. I'd just, I'd like to hear you talk to me for a few minutes. It's just hard for me to say sure, when I have no idea who you are, never seen you before in my life.
I don't have a problem.
I know.
Anybody in?
You say you're fine already.
I didn't make that slip out.
You weren't supposed to pick up on that. See how I just kind of let that go, let that go in?
That's Dale's face, let that go in the main page on the ride. That's Dublin for dollars.
I think with that.
They don't know that.
I've only been here for twenty years, or about seventeen years.
They don't know that.
I graduated in the high school nineteen sixty-seven.
That was five years ago. So you graduated just like, what, twenty years after Dale?
Well, Dale didn't know that.
All right. I'll get Miss Browning after this is over and talk to her a little bit. You want, I'll, I'll get Miss Browning and visit with her for a few minutes after this is over. I know you want this to happen tonight, but I can't do it tonight. I don't know.
I'll, I'll take one other thing. I'll talk to your wife.
I'm sorry.
I've sent a couple of emails. Did you not get any of my emails I sent? I'm sorry. I, I have, I have three points that I sent you. You ready for me? Okay. So the next thing that I have on there, Mr. Dyer Mendoza is a resident of our area. He and his wife purchased a piece of property. If you go down Highway sixty-seven toward Hope, they're across the road from, yes, they're across the road from Mr. Terry Kirkpatrick. My understanding, after visiting with Mr. Mendoza, it was brought to my attention that back in October of twenty twenty-three, Mr. Mendoza approached the city about receiving water services. So the city was able to place a water tap or water meter on, I believe it's the west side of the road, which would be on the same side as Mr. Terry Kirkpatrick, at the furthest point that the water goes to that line, which is directly in front of the feed mill. So Mr. Mendoza was unaware that he would have to bore under the highway at his own expense. He knew he was going to have to lay pipe along the road at his own expense, because that part of the property is not inside the city limits. Unfortunately, he has checked with the highway department, and please correct me if I'm wrong, nine thousand or ten? Nine?
Nine thousand.
So it's cost nine thousand dollars to bore under the highway, and that's just the boring end of the highway. So what Mr. Mendoza would like to, to request humbly from the city council is if we could move his water meter from the west side of the road to the east side of the road, to the side where the mill is at, there is a fire hydrant there. So the city has already incurred the expense of running the line under the highway, because there's a, a fire hydrant there. If we could come off of that line and provide him with a water meter, we could possibly gain a water customer for the future. As it is right now, Mr. Mendoza spent six hundred and fifty dollars to place that water meter with a, with a deposit. And unfortunately, because of his lack of understanding, all the things that would have to transpire, he still is without water. So he and his family are hauling water for, for necessities. Bathing, eating, any of their animals, that they're having to haul water in. So we're humbly asking if the city council would consider moving that water meter onto the side where the mill is to give him an opportunity to contact all of those property owners along that side of sixty-seven. He, he knows he's going to have to be out the expense of digging the ditch and laying his own pipe to get there. But at least if we could move that for him, that could give him a crying chance of getting water, and that would increase some income coming into the city, because he would then be a city water customer.
You want, you want to run your own, if we move the meter to this side of the road, you want to run your line from that meter on through there?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with that.
I can, I can go ahead and rent a ditch wedge and, and do the trench from the feed mill.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we've already got water on that side.
Where does that water line stop on that side?
Uh, right along down there.
So are we going to charge him another tap fee to put, put his meter on that side of the road?
He's already got a meter, and you've already paid that fee, right?
But it's on the other side of the road.
I know.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Just, just, we just move that one over and done that part of the turn.
And that on the river, we're responsible liable for anything beyond the meter?
No.
Yeah, beyond the meter is, is his.
Yeah. Yeah, we can get that meter moved over to the other side of the road. And so we can start making your plans and run the line, and let us know when you get the line around, and then we'll move the meter that way.
I have one more question. Ms. Al, you said you did a petition of names?
Sir?
You did a petition of names, fifty-four people?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a copy?
No, they're right here.
If y'all don't mind.
Can I get, can I get a copy, let you know copies of it, or do you want the originals?
No, no, just copies of the petitions of it.
Can you make copies of these for me, please? I didn't, I didn't bring them.
What, what is that?
He's wanting copies of the petitions.
I got asked, I got to talk to him, oh, you didn't ask him, you know, court affidavit. Like I said, I don't know. I'm just trying to
Or do you, I mean, are you wanting a blank copy of the, of the petition, or you're wanting the actual signature? Okay, so the signature, that's what he's asking for.
Those signatures are asking for what?
To have that placed on the ballot, to have the, the annexation ordinance placed on the ballot for March twenty twenty-three. I mean, twenty twenty-six, excuse me, March third of twenty twenty-six.
Maureen, talk that back up again. You don't look at me, Mr. Booger. Keep talking that back up again. You're looking at me like I brought it up again.
Yeah, I just want to get all things together. That way, we, we, we just know what, yeah, that was not emotional.
Emotion to table it.
Yeah, I just see, I just see a copy of the names.
Glenn had them say, I'll get a copy tomorrow.
Is that on that petition?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I had each individual person sign a petition. That was, the lawyer that I spoke with gave that recommendation. That way, if, if you have a twenty-page petition and one name's on it, they throw the whole page out. So the attorney said, don't take that chance, have everybody sign a single page. So those are, yeah, there's fifty-four pages, or more than fifty-four, because there's actually some copies that some people weren't actually registered at the time.
Yeah, that's what I said.
They registered, I took their stuff down, then I came back and said, okay, you're now a registered voter. Now you can sign the petition. So there's some of those in there also. It's okay.
Yeah, just make sure everybody's registered.
Great, yeah, she's, she's making your copy. All right. So the next thing that I sent an email on, it was brought to our attention about, and I apologize. Ms. Jewel, for thirty-two years, has placed her announcements to the community out there on the blue box. In no way was she ever trying to disfigure it or tear up city property. She had no idea that it would cause such a stink. But, so the city has repainted that. So Ms. Roseland actually made a suggestion that Eva take on that project. So I am prepared, if the city will give me permission, to create some type of an announcement board that we can put right in line there with the little blue box. Mainly people that I talked with, especially your elderly, your disabled. They like being able to pull up there, put their water payment in, and be able to see, you know, the announcements of the town. So we would like, with the permission of the council, to be able to create a little announcement board that we can put there beside the blue box. It is, is one thing we're asking for permission to do from the council.
You get more than a small board?
Yeah, we're just, I, I'll have to talk to some Well, I mean, it probably needs to be a little bit bigger than one sheet, because like this last time, Octo, the last quarter is a very busy time for us. We usually have, like, the, the garage sale, the first of October. We have the trunk or treat the end of October. We usually have the community luncheon for Thanksgiving, the first of November. Then we have our Christmas programs. We have two different Christmas programs in December. So at times, we will have possibly three to four announcements posted up there. You know, of course, we, we want it to look nice, we want it small, but that's, you know, what we're, we're asking for there. So it's my understanding, I, I didn't see it, but it was all over Facebook where, like, people were wanting to, like, I, I think a lot of people thought it was me that placed them there, and so they were talking about, like, pressing charges against her. Good gosh, no, my gosh, my poor little mother-in-law's eighty-nine years old. Let's please don't press charges against her. Again, she had no idea, if you know her, you know how much she loves this town. She would never, in a million years, try to tear up anything. And so, but, but I, I do understand that it was, my understanding is pulling the paint off, and so we don't want to do that either. So, but if we could just fix, like, a little announcement board there, if you guys are okay with that.
I had the understanding that she tore up Jackie several times.
Tore Jackie up several times.
Yeah, yeah. She didn't have a problem with that, or my brother either. You know what size you want to hang Warren's mountain, or you're going to talk to me about this?
Are we looking at wooden material or metal material?
I was actually going to speak with Uncle Jimmy, since he's our woodworking professional, see if he has some, some ideas.
Are we looking at concrete then? Are we digging a post? Are we just putting something up there?
So I haven't even brought this before the Emmett, the Eva group. I just was trying to make sure it would be okay with you guys if we did some research, maybe came back with a cost estimate, let you know kind of maybe the difference.
What it costs Eva?
Right, right. I mean, Eva, I'm just saying.
We do care about what it's built out of and how it's matted to the ground.
I got you. So again, I don't have those answers. I, I was just trying to make sure that it's approved before I even bring it up to them, because if it's not approved, then I can't bring it up to them.
I'm not going to approve it this evening.
Okay.
I would ask, just like Rob mentioned, Maureen, I would ask to have more information about the size, the look, the construction, and placement also.
It's a good idea.
Size, construction, I, I got lost. Size, construction, placement?
Placement. You know, just pretty much everything about it. For our next meeting.
All right, I can, I can do that. The other thing that I also discovered, the board that's out here on the wall, I'm not sure what year that was done, but I think close to probably twenty-five, thirty years ago, that board was originally placed there by the Eva group. That was purchased and put there. It has not been well-maintained, and so it actually, all the the cork boarding stuff where you can put your pins in, it's gone. I think at one time it had a plexiglass slide, that's messed up. We would also like to possibly look at refurbishing that, that's already there, trying to see how much it would cost for us to put a new cork board lining there, possibly put a new plexiglass thing there, if, if that would be something that you guys would approve.
You're talking about remodeling the existing?
The existing, yes, sir. And currently, the
I buy quite a bit of those where I work.
Yes, sir.
I would strongly suggest them pricing one that size, because by the time that you rebuild it, you can buy a brand new.
I got you. So is that, are you okay with us refurbishing what's there, or, or replacing it with a newer model, or?
Council, he's constantly saying that you'll bring the information to us.
So that also, okay.
Whatever you do, it's got to be the exact same size, because we don't even be painting different color paint trying to cover, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
You can cover the same paint marks.
I got you. So I'll work on getting this information for that for the next meeting. Let's see, the last thing that I have on us is to give an update on the Arkla Children's Park renovations. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to drive down by there, but it has been transformed. We were very, very blessed. The Emmett Vision Association was able to secure a two thousand five hundred dollar grant from Energy Transit, the company here in Hope, right next door, that bought the borders that go around the outside of it. Those gentlemen also do community service hours, where the company actually pays them to give back to the community. So we had seven, we had seven people from Energy Transit. Several of them went to school here. One gentleman lives here, Mr. George Schmidt. Mr. George Schmidt actually was on vacation Tuesday, and he came down in a starched and iron shirt and jeans and got right in there with those workers. He, he was shoveling gravel, he was helping us pull weeds, he was moving gravel with equipment. I mean, it was awesome. We worked hard from eight-thirty that morning till about four-thirty that afternoon, but we got that transformed. After about noon time, he came to me and he said, you know, you really need more gravel. You don't, you don't have enough pea gravel here. And I said, yes, sir, but right now, we're out of money, so the Emmett Vision Association will have to do some kind of a fundraiser, maybe a chili supper or something like that. And he said, you know what, I'm going to take care of that for you. So he stepped to the side, made one phone call, and had two loads of gravel, pea gravel brought in and dumped. So not only did they give us twenty-five hundred dollars in cash to do the borders, they helped us with manpower, and they provided two loads of gravel. So please, take the time to go down there, look at that children's park, and if you see, Dee placed a Facebook ad on our Eva page. She named off all of the participants. If you know any of those young men, or even Mr. Schmidt, please tell them thank you. Tell them thank you, because the work that they did was, was just out of this world. The only other thing that I have for Eva is, of course, we're having our community trunk or treat Friday, October thirty-first, from six PM to eight PM. We're encouraging all residents who would like to give out candy, please come and join us. We'll, we'll be down there in the park. We'll just make a great big U shape, have the children come through. If you're a family with young children, please come. It's all free. We don't charge for any of that. We're just, we're encouraging our citizens to have a safe place for our elderly residents to be able to pass out candy. And we're also encouraging a safe place for our citizens who have small children to be able to receive candy. So we've got those two things going. Six PM to eight PM, six to eight. All right, that's all I've got.
Also, my wife failed to mention that old tree that was down there. That old tree, that old dead tree, I cut it down, cut it up and carved it off, and like two top red snakes, I killed them too.
You opened your place too?
Anyway, we got that down because the kids
Isn't it a delight, isn't it, did?
Yeah, yeah, for that old that would give a snag. We got it down. And then those reboards I carried down to the And then those reboars I carried down to the city shop and then we, yeah, we done that with Fox. But that tree's down and next year maybe we can, and I took that dirt and smoothed it out where you told me to. And we'll get, get that, uh, tree ground, maybe this next spring, we can, I'll get a guy to do it. It should be the last, you know, but it, it ain't going to fall. I'm kidding now.
Dale, so come back. He could take that tree down. He said he'd do it for thousands of them.
No. No.
Let me think about this a little bit.
Ain't going to do that. I had that thing down, cut up about thirty minutes. No, no.
Okay, uh. What did we got though? Next minute, we take you.
Yes.
We deal together. Uh, we have to do one. We did, we finished it?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all right, we'll have to do one. It doesn't, that's what I need to do. We'll have, what we probably want, what we have to make. Same tax, five mill tax that we passed, although for him to carry. Uh, we need to do another one. And now we're trying water water to real food. We'll have to do another one in the Lake of County. So, and does it apply to the other?
Are we going to get any kind of this paperwork, agenda or something with any of this information?
Yeah, yeah, that should be, this, this must have done.
And then, uh, we never get a, uh, financials for last month.
For last month?
For last month, yes.
Okay, I'll do them tomorrow.
We got an agenda handed to us at the meeting, but we didn't get any kind of financials for last month. This month we got financials with no agenda.
I'll get, uh, you pick on the last one.
Well, I don't know if it's, if it's financials are for last month or this month. Uh, it's today's date. I mean, what was printed, what do you see this month's? Well, if you know, you choked on me, I, I, we, oh, it's just a date. So you would assume that all it is is something that's current as of today, but.
Nobody, anybody Michael Moak, did you, Nevada County, did I get?
For Nevada County?
Yeah.
We got second, we didn't have to. For, no, for Nevada.
Oh, nothing amazing.
What I can't want, man.
This is going to prevent, oh, they will have one just last.
Well, I, I will do that. We'll set the, the, uh. I'll second it again. On four. Okay, if they want to, you can, uh, call it.
Uh, can we invest in some microphones? Because we can't hear you, especially with the air con, with the air conditioning running. It's hard to understand what you're working on. But if you each had like a microphone on each table, it would probably be.
We'll back there.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, I just want to bring up something. The last regular meeting, uh, I, I'll check you on, on y'all's website about when the meeting was. And I noticed the latest meeting that y'all had was from twenty twenty four. Uh, and I wanted to offer my services to update y'all's website for you.
Update our what?
Website. Web thing.
Update your web thing. Here's my content.
Okay, let me check into that.
I don't think there's something I can vote on tonight. Dale had to do some checking and get some information and I'm sure I had to get pricing and everything.
Well, that is fine. I, I have my prices on my website.
Okay.
Uh, and I, I have discounts where y'all can get up to seventy five percent off.
Okay.
So I, I just wanted at least to tell y'all about that.
Right, right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Anyone else got anything to bring up? I'm motionally adjourned. All right, and, uh, you going to talk to Senator now?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna walk outside and talk to him in a minute.
All right, and I'd like to act on this today.
Well, I know you would, but I'm, I'm not ready to act at this moment. I'll let you know before I leave here.
Randomly, we're most of the.
I'll second the motion we adjourned.
All right, oh.